Good evening, I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to gather together this evening and ask your guidance in the decisions we are about to make. Help us to do all of our work in the best interests of the children we serve, and guide us as we begin the process of closing out one school year and transitioning to the next. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Lemoine, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Aceveda?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Diesart?
Here.
Doctors Kraft and Lewis are not with us this evening. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. First item on the agenda are community concerns. Ms. Benazak, has anyone signed up?
No, ma'am, not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to incorporate the report of the April 14, 2015, general committee meeting into the minutes of the April regular monthly meeting. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, is there a second? Second by Mr. Nikosia. Any discussion of the motion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are personnel changes.
As you can see, the ones highlighted in yellow are our changes from the committee meeting. What we've listed here are our, you see a lot of our resignations for people who will be moving on. Most of them are moving out of town, some are taking jobs in other places with their spouses as they move. So with that, and we do have a retiree, Lyndear, but I think we recognize that at our last meeting as well. If there are any questions, I will be happy to answer them at this point.
Are there any questions? Just want to again wish Ms. Deere a very happy retirement and thank her for so many years of working with the St. Bernard Parish School System. She did an excellent job. Ms. Votche, all of the resignations for teachers, those will be, that means all these will be available, and we have a job fair?
At job fair.
And when is that job fair for the public?
May 9th. May 9th, and if we have certified people out there who wish to apply for the open positions that we're posting, they need to send their applications in for our open positions.
And it will be where?
It will be held at the training center at Chalmette Elementary, the morning of Saturday, May 9th.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the 2014-2015 revised general fund, special revenue, and lunch fund budgets. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Mr. England, is there a second by Mrs. Lemoine? Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. And if I would, I could take a quick personal privilege. We were on personnel changes. Saw Mr. Granberry just recently, and he is doing very well, and we want to just tell him that we are so happy that he is recovered and doing great. So, Mr. Granberry, we can't wait to see you back again. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is motion to approve a resolution against Senate Bill 85, local inventory tax. There was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. England?
Yeah. Mr. Diesart, what I found out today, they moved that from committee, the Bill 85, and they put it to another bill, to 177. So the resolution that we're sending up to Baton Rouge to this senate committee, to that committee people, it's not going to help us. The committee tomorrow, this meeting, I think Ms. Votche might be going up there, it's going to be Bill 177. So if we can adjust this, amend this resolution to address...
Incorporate that as well.
Right. Incorporate it.
Right. What happened is the Senate Bill 85, which was the repeal of the local, the inventory tax, which was before senate revenue and fiscal affairs, that bill was deferred because many organizations and people went up in opposition, so it did not get out of committee. So we were successful with that. However, they turned around and have a very similar bill, which is Senate Bill 177 by the same author, which exempts those types of inventories from the tax rolls, again. He is now putting it through senate finance committee, which supposedly is more favorable, in his opinion, to an outcome for him. That bill, that committee is meeting tomorrow afternoon, early afternoon, and we are going to go up again and speak in opposition to this. It'll be the Sheriff's Association, the Superintendent's Association, the School Board Association, local municipalities, police departments, all the governmental bodies which are going to be affected by it. We're being told, though, that there is sentiment to pass this out of that senate committee favorably, to get it out there on the floor, to try to force some type of negotiation with this. Even if the bill is passed, of course, then it has to go before the people in October as a constitutional amendment to be voted on, because this is a constitutionally approved tax. If we go through any negotiations with this, we will lose constitutional protection on this for a promise by some legislators that they will try to make us whole. Now you realize, any fund established to try to make us whole can be just wiped out in the next session, because it is not protected in any way, shape, or form. And since our community is more heavily affected than just about any parish in this state, it's going to have a much more severe impact on us. So we would definitely be in opposition. So if we could include in this resolution not only Senate Bill 85, in case it is brought back, but that Senate Bill 177, and we'll ask Ms. Benazak that first thing in the morning, that she fax this out to, or email this out to the members of senate finance, so that we'll have that immediately, first thing in the morning, before they enter into their committee meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Mr. England, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we include Bill 177 on our resolution.
Okay. There's a motion amended and seconded by Ms. Lemoine. So it's House Bill 85, I mean Senate Bill, excuse me, 85 and 1, and Senate Bill 177.
Correct.
Should we read the minutes, Ms. Votche?
Well, we've read it in at the committee meeting. If you'd like to do it again, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay.
Would you let me do it again?
Yes, please.
Where Senate Bill 85 and Senate Bill 177 of the 2015 Louisiana legislation urges certain changes in the current provisions for ad valorem taxes levied against manufacturers, distributors, and retailers that hold inventory, and where such changes would represent a 28 percent decrease in the amount of ad valorem taxes collected by governmental agencies in St. Bernard Parish, causing additional financial distress to already economically strapped public entities, whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board alone would see an annual decrease of $3.7 million of ad valorem taxes collected on its behalf, creating additional financial hardship for the district. Be it therefore resolved, the St. Bernard Parish School Board respectfully requests that its legislative delegation, along with all members of the legislature, stand against Senate Bill 85 and Senate Bill 177, and stand in support of financially distressed public entities. And be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution be forwarded to the members of the legislative delegation representing St. Bernard, to remaining members of the senate and house, and to other school boards within the state of Louisiana.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Are there any other questions or any comments on this resolution?
I just want to, I'll say that this not only affects the school board by $3.7 million of ad valorem taxes, but it also, it would affect the sheriff's office, the parish government, and other governmental agencies within St. Bernard Parish.
It would be $12.9 million to the parish of St. Bernard.
Twelve point nine total?
Between 12.8 and 12.9 million to St. Bernard Parish, of which 3.7 is designated for the school board, the remaining amounts to all the other governmental agencies in this parish.
So it would devastate us?
Absolutely.
As far as our financial status and...
Yeah. The school system, the sheriff's department, local government, roads, libraries, every government, assessors, every governmental unit there is would be severely affected by this.
And then it's going to affect the residents also.
And if, and this is absolutely true, Mr. England, if, for example, these, this, these inventories were exempt from taxation, when we have bonded indebtedness, not only the school system, but public bodies as well, we have to, we are bound by law to levy millage sufficient to repay the principal and interest of those bonds in each and every year. So if some of the property is off the rolls, if that's exempted, if this inventory is exempted, we still, then our millage would increase...
That's correct.
For the bonded indebtedness, which would mean that would shift the tax burden to homeowners and to small businesses which hold small amounts of inventory.
That's correct.
So it would be shifted from the larger businesses that hold big amounts, large amounts of inventory, shifted to homeowners and small businesses that hold at the end of the year small inventories.
So everybody's going to be affected.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Thank you, Mr. England. And Mr. Long?
Well, and Ms. Votche, am I correct, Adley, Representative Adley, he comes from a district that...
Has very little.
Very, this affects his district very little.
From what I understand.
I think what, we do have hope, though, because if it affects that many people and that many government agencies around the state, when it hits the floor, I'm sure these guys are going to hear it from everyone around the state, and I don't think it's going to pass in the form it is now. They may be using it, like you said earlier, as a negotiating tool to do something else, but let's hope that it does die on the floor.
And this is one, and as you say, Mr. Long, they're holding this as a negotiation tool, and the promises are to try to make local public bodies whole. But again, how do we agree to lose a constitutionally protected tax in favor of a promise that we're going to be held harmless?
That's correct.
That can be changed in any legislative session from this point forward? Because it would never have to, you know, go through a vote of the people to change that. They could do it under the guise of the state cannot financially continue to maintain what that promise is.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Or question? Mr. Campbell?
Yes. I understood you to say that should this pass, it has to go before the voters?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there's hope.
There is hope at that point. And what, and even some of our legislators did not understand, when they get these bills before them, because of that process, that will reduce their savings for this fiscal year. Because if by some chance this would pass by a vote of the people in October, by the time this stuff is levied and those rolls adjusted, you're going to have less than half of that year left. The people would have already paid these taxes. So they're not going to necessarily realize the fruits of this in the year that we supposedly have this extreme budget crisis. And some of them were amazed to learn that that was going to happen, and they're sitting up there making those decisions.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So basically, it is the state trying to save money, but shifting the burden from big business to the local people. Essentially, and then taking away from local governments also.
Right. Because right now, the state reimburses big business for that, well, all businesses, for the amount that they're paying on this inventory tax. So it's a wash for business right now. The state is looking at saving the money by not reimbursing. Well, if the property is exempt from taxation, there is no reimbursement to make. So that would mean we suffer. So if they would leave the tax in place and just amend and say, well, the state is not going to reimburse anymore, repeal that statute, then big business, or businesses would pick up the burden of this. And I guess they're looking at, who do they want to be angry? The local governmental bodies or business and industry? You decide.
Okay. Anyone else? There is a motion on the floor and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the bus bid tabulation. There was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. Holton? You have anything else to add? Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to accept the...
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Warner, is there a second? Second by Mr. Campbell? For the bus tabulation, Mr. Long?
Quick question, and the motion is for the, to purchase the air conditioning bus?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
And it goes to Kent Mitchell?
Kent Mitchell, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Holton, they're the only ones that placed bids, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We put it out for bid, and that they're the only ones that we received a bid on?
We sent it to the three dealers that we had gotten responses from for earlier bids, and two of them chose not to bid. We did get a bid from Kent Mitchell.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Holton. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation of Lakeen Oubre and Associates as architect for the new elementary school. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Mr. England, is seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion?
I just have one quick question for Ms. Votche.
Mr. Warner?
Do we, our projections show that by, I think this is supposed to be ready by August of 2017, that, you know, we'll have enough sufficient income coming in and for pupils to pay for the teachers and all the benefits and all their packages for this in the future?
Yes, as well as we ever can, as long as our tax base isn't lessened and we're able to generate, you know, the same income. I don't think the number of teachers would sufficiently change. Of course, when you're operating another facility, that will increase costs, and you have an administrative group and everything that goes along with a new school. I think hopefully that will, we'll see some savings in bus, you know, transportation, it'll be more efficient, it won't be as far as we have to take all kids. So yeah, we will have the funds that we feel are necessary to support the opening of a new school. And in all honesty, we have to, because we are just, I mean, bulging at the seams at the elementary level.
And just to follow, how many teachers, personnel, you're talking about 75 to 100 for that school?
Oh, no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be that many for an elementary. I would, I would say, because when we, let's see, pre-K, K 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 5 per section, 35, maybe 40 teachers, if you do, maybe at the most, five sections per level, that's 45, 35 teachers, then you throw in maybe three or four cultural arts teachers, that bring you about 40 teachers maybe, and then you've got your principal, assistant principal, council librarian, and whatever special education aid you would have. So no, it wouldn't be 75 to 100 people. At an elementary level, it would be much fewer, many fewer.
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Long?
Yes, just like to say, I'm excited about having a new elementary school built. I know it's, it's needed, and it's something we've been, we've been looking at for a while. And my only hope is that, especially if we have sufficient land donated to us, let's try to build the largest school that we can, according to funds that we have available, because this is a school that's located basically in a central part of our parish. So no matter where the population shifts go, east or west, you have that, that large school there to accommodate either way, you see?
And, and Mr. Warner, just going back to your question, what I may not have made clear in my answer, is we would need that many teachers to staff it, but that would not be new employees. Because as the children are moving from other schools to populate that school, staff members will move as well, as we've done, as we've opened every new facility. Doesn't mean we're hiring that many new people. They would be transferring with the students from the other schools. So it may be a few extra, depending upon how the numbers fall, but it would not be that many additional employees. Okay.
And, yeah, that, that sounds like a great plan. Are we, are we looking at using the entire, was it 14 acres?
14 and a half acres. I think what we're going to have to do with this particular school is the site plan is going to have to be a little bit different to accommodate much more onsite parking. You know, the parking situations at most of our schools, we try to provide enough that on a daily basis, it's sufficient. When we have special events, when you have open house, supplies, grandparents' day, where you're attracting a lot of people a few times a year, then a lot of times, those parking situations spill over into the community. Well, this is not a location where anything can spill over into the community.
Right. It's on a major thoroughfare.
So the site, so the site plan will have to, will have to accommodate more onsite parking than we would necessarily at another school. But the school building itself will be very similar. In fact, Mr. Carey and I, we met with Ms. Harleton and the elementary principals the other day to talk about our current elementary schools that we have built over the years. What are the good things? What are the bad things? What's the perfect size library that you have? How does, how do your bus pickup and drop off? What does that look like? What would you have done differently? For our special education students, would we have redesigned, would we have designed this a little bit differently? So we got all of their input, so what we're trying to do is to develop a school that each time we do it, we get a little bit better at. And hopefully, you know, we've got it down to a science now, we hope.
And I'm glad you mentioned buses, because having the buses being able to come off the highway and, and make, make a loop, say, could probably be the best way to go.
Right. And so, and hopefully, then, we'll be able to set it up in a situation that it'll be the most efficient. You know, because we're going to be looking at transportation routes probably the next meeting or two, and we may be looking at school times to make sure that we have enough time in between that we're not waiting for buses to arrive. Because we've got a couple of elementary schools right now where buses are not arriving within the first 25 minutes after the end of the school, and we're going to have to make those adjustments for next year so that we are not having the long wait time.
And I'm sure you're going to take into consideration the, the traffic, maybe a traffic signal or something with the Department of Transportation.
Right.
So we have good egress and ingress to, to the property.
We're already beginning to have those discussions of how that would be handled. See a lot of times, you see schools all over the state that are on those types of thoroughfares that have the long, even the flashing lights. When you come off, say, the 510, and you're coming into the parish on Parish Road, it drops, the speed limit drops down before that point is met anyway. And then we would have the big school zone flashing lights and stuff. So we're working, we're going to be working with the Department of Transportation and making sure that ingress and egress is done well, you know, so that it'll be safe for our students.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any comments, questions? I have just a comment that I'm extremely excited, I said it at the committee meeting, but I'm going to say it again, because I know all the parents are excited also at elementary schools. You know, this school is so needed, and it's a wonderful thing that we have grown, but it's also going to allow future growth in our parish, you know, for our younger students. So it's just going to be a great thing to see it get off, off the drawing board, and as Ms. Votche said, it's going to be probably the most perfect school through experience of all the schools.
At least physical facility, right.
Yes. Because when we sat down, you know, after the storm, and we tried to draw a long-term plan and, and, you know, try to envision what, what we were going to be, you know, population-wise, it was, it was a good guesstimation, and it's great that we have grown so much. And, you know, we have so many, so many students to serve, so it's just going to be a great thing for our new school. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Next item, items to be placed on the agenda of the next committee meeting. There being none, superintendent's recommendations?
Nothing as, other than we are, you know, winding the school year down, we're getting ready for the second part of the park test, which will be in the first week in May, and the beginning of, and of course, testing at the high school level, which will start the end of April and go for an entire month as we, as we go through, and we have all of our end of year activities. We also have the... You don't have another personnel? Is that on the personnel? Okay. We also have on the, I lost my train of thought. We're, we're heavily into what's happening in the legislature right now for not only the inventory tax, which we talked about, but the educational issues that are, are going to be going before House and Senate Ed. And as you know, that we've met with our legislator, many of y'all around here, to talk with them about what our, I guess our wants and our needs are, and hopefully, we'll see some of that come to fruition in the session. I just got this passed before me, that on the personnel changes, we may have omitted... I just got this passed before me, that on the personnel changes, we may have omitted a very important appointment, you know, that we, that you used to make as the school board, but now we do here and just inform you. But remember how we advertised for the assistant principal of Smith Elementary School, because Mr. Catagno had transferred over to the jail thing? So we ran the interviews recently, and the committee was comprised of, you know, the principal and Ms. Harleton as the elementary supervisor. So we're going to appoint as the assistant principal Cassandra Reddick, who has been at Smith Elementary for a long period of time. She was a teacher, then she was, served in the capacity of the instructional coach, and has been working very hard along with Mr. Catagno in that capacity as well. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we're making that appointment for Cassandra Reddick as the assistant principal of Smith Elementary School. And I apologize for it being left off of your notification on the personnel changes that we looked at under that item, and it was a miscommunication, I think, as, as Ms. Larson and Mr. Granberry and I are trying to do this all at the same time, and we, we missed putting it on there. So I do apologize. So want to let you know that. Okay.
That's it?
Yes.
Well, congratulations to Ms. Reddick.
Okay.
The new assistant principal at Smith Elementary. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Esseveda. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.